Ready to start our meeting for February 10, 2025. If we could stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, without any flaws.
Audra, could we have a roll call, please?
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Here.
Lee Trahan?
Here.
And Jeff West?
Here.
Do we have any disclosures of conflicts of interest tonight?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah, Resolution 06. I'm a member of the auxiliary. A member of what? The Winslow auxiliary?
Oh.
Oh, the VFW.
Yep.
Is it because you're a member, Lee?
Yes.
Anybody have an issue, feel it's a conflict because he's a member of the VFW? Any of the council members have an issue with that?
No.
Nope?
No.
You're good?
Uh, no, it is a conflict.
It is a direct conflict.
Because he's a member?
Because he's on the board.
Oh, he's on the board. No, I thought it was because he was a member.
So he just needs to abstain.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Any other conflicts? Can we have a motion to go into the approval of the minutes? And is it okay if we combined January 2nd and 13th unless somebody has amendments or changes?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Point of order, you gotta have a motion to combine them both first and then both.
I just asked for a motion to combine them both as one.
But that's not what his motion was.
That's all my motion was.
Okay.
So are we all good? We're doing it as one? Can we have a roll call, Audra?
One moment, please. Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion to combine minutes, to approve the minutes to combine January 2nd and January 13th of 2025 passes seven to zero.
Thank you. On the first, under communications, it's my understanding, Audra, am I correct, that the presentation from the auditor is postponed?
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's correct. We just filed out, I don't know, half hour ago.
Okay, next up is B, Boards Committee Appointments. Justin Smith, Board of Assessment Review. Is Justin here?
Make a motion to accept Justin Smith, Board of Assessment Review.
Second.
Roll call, please, Audra.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Justin Smith to the Board of Assessment Review passes seven to zero.
Next, an appointment for Peter Behringer, Agricultural Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Peter Behringer to the Agriculture Committee passes seven to zero.
Next, we have the seven members for the Charter Review Committee. It's sponsored by Lee. Lee?
Yes.
Did you want to say what your sponsor?
Well, yeah, basically, I wanted to, in the past, we had, kinda went forward to create the Charter Committee to review the charter and make any changes that, there are some things in there that really should get buttoned up a little bit better and have a little more guidelines for the, for the council to follow. So I wanted to squatch of this and kinda get that back in the swing of things and get it going again. We already have a list of, I believe it's 10 people that were interested in being on it, and I'd like to move forward with it.
So I believe we probably need a motion to vote for seven members? Is that correct, or is that not tonight?
We've already voted to.
We have a committee, but we're going to vote for the members, correct? Are we voting tonight? Or do we have to do that in another meeting?
First, we have to vote on how we're gonna take the vote. Bill Lee suggested two alternatives. For the sake of argument, we'll just call alternative one, was each council member would nominate someone and then we take the vote and go right around the table. Second alternative was to do it the way Audra's presented us, with a list of all the names, and we just mark off the seven that we want. But first, we have to vote on how we're gonna vote.
You need to vote on how you're going to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
The procedure to use to pick the members is what it is.
All right. I guess I'll motion to vote with the.
Ballots?
Ballots.
I'd second that.
Roll call?
One moment. Doris Lebranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
So motion to vote with paper ballots passes seven to zero.
So I did pass them all out. If you could put your name on the top, please, and then vote for seven people. Mr. Querian, I could not get a hold of him until Fran did this evening, so he is available and willing to be on this committee, so you can vote for him even though I've crossed him out. And then we'll tally them up.
But we're not voting one to seven now, we just.
Just seven. Just check off seven of them.
Nope.
I already got these yet. And Tanya's gonna be kind enough to kinda tally them up for us.
So did you want to hold things up until we get all that finished?
I think we can move along and come back when Tanya's. I know Tanya can handle it.
Next on the agenda is the Fire Department Presentation. I'm sorry, I don't have any idea who's doing that.
Hold on a second. Oh, okay. Sorry, we saw people voting, so.
Good. All right. So this presentation's actually being presented by the IAFF Union for the firefighters. So, my name's Wyatt Oliver. I'm the president of the union. This is Adam Burgess behind me. He's the vice president of the union. This is Michael Greenberg. He's our secretary treasurer. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with us, the union handles all of the labor management negotiations with the town. The union is made up of nine firefighters, all of which are the floor staff for the Winslow Fire Department. So we're the guys who go on calls every day, we're the guys who do everything around the station, we're the full-time employees. What we've done is we've made a small presentation showing our support for Deputy Chief Mike Murphy. My secretary treasurer, Michael Greenberg, is gonna be reading that to you guys tonight. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Wyatt. So my name is Mike Greenberg. I'm a full-time firefighter EMT here at Winslow, and we've penned a short, one-page letter in support of Deputy Chief Michael Murphy. Just for some context, the firefighter is not expressing an opinion one way or the other about dissolution of the Public Safety Department. It's not really our lane. We're happy to come to work one way or the other. But to the extent that that may require Deputy Chief Murphy to apply for a different job title or what have you, we just want, on the record, that we're fully in support of DC Murphy, and we'd like to see him continue to be the head of the Fire Department, whatever that might be called six months from now. So, I'm writing on behalf of the members of the IAFF 5479, the collective bargaining unit that represents full-time, rank-and-file professional firefighters of the Winslow Fire Department. It's come to our attention that the dissolution of the Department of Public Safety necessitate a posting for the position of fire chief. We wish to express our unanimous and enthusiastic endorsement of Deputy Chief Michael Murphy for that position. DC Murphy's 34 years of experience in the fire service has allowed him to develop a reputation that precedes him. He's a leader that firefighters and paramedics want to work for. His tenure as Winslow's deputy fire chief has been a resounding success by any measure. For the past year and a half, DC Murphy has served as the Fire Department's chief for all intents and purposes. He's carried out both the operational and administrative duties of chief with the highest level of competence. During DC Murphy's tenure, the Fire Department has remained on task and on budget despite a series of complex issues such as record-high call volumes, once-in-a-generation weather events, resource-intensive structure fires such as KDRP, as well as the introduction of the new collective bargaining unit to the department and a contract negotiation with the town. His performance in dealing with these challenges has been top-notch in every respect. One of the ways in which Chief Murphy has excelled in his ability to delegate, is his ability to delegate tasks while remaining, while maintaining appropriate oversight. For example, inventory of the department's medical supplies has been moved to a digital program designed in conjunction with one of the firefighters. The purchasing of routine medical supplies has been delegated to a specific firefighter with all of the purchases reviewed by DC Murphy. Similar systems have been put into place for tracking EMT continuing education requirements, fire service certifications, grant writing, and the department's live training operations. Efficient, common-sense changes like these have allowed DC Murphy to focus his time and effort on larger goals which drive the department forward rather than simply keep it shredding water. Examples include expanding the volunteer call force from two to nine members, launching the Winslow Fire Academy, which is currently in the process of training 15 new firefighters in the central main area, which are desperately needed, several of whom will be volunteer members here at Winslow, as well as developing protocols and training for newer threats such as electric vehicle fires. Additionally, DC Murphy worked closely with one of our members to win the main EMA grant, which provided the funding to begin an ambulance transfer program. If that program is launched, we have no doubt DC Murphy has the knowledge and skill necessary to ensure it is implemented effectively and efficiently, driving the department forward to provide new services and expanded capabilities to the community while continuing to maintain budget integrity. We recognize that there are requirements imposed on the town council and town manager by state law with respect to the reorganization of the Public Safety Department back to two fully independent departments of police and fire. We simply ask, to the extent possible, that town council and town manager refrain from attempting to fix that which is not broken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The ties?
We have a tie with four votes between Roy Lord, Steve Susie, and Earl Watts. So we need to vote for one of them, Tanya? Two of them?
Two.
Let me hand out four of these.
Audra, could you tell us who the other ones, they got for, or got enough votes to be on it?
Yep. Garrett Buzzell, Michelle Dorr, Lee Trahan, Nicholas Weiss, and Thomas Welch. So I need you to vote for two people between Roy Lord, Steve Susie, and Earl Watts, please. Please put your name on the top of these. And again, Jerry's. Oh, I didn't grab a pen. Sorry.
Who was it?
Two.
Roy, Earl, and Susie.
It was Susie, Lord, or Watts? Susie, Lord, or Watts?
We have left just Lee and Dale?
Lee and Dale. So why don't you just give me back?
We're voting for two, I lose three, right?
Correct.
Nope, I didn't put my name on top. Can you put my name on? I just want you standing up in front of everybody.
I can't hear you, Tanya.
Please proceed.
All right. So reports of committees and commissions, town managers?
I'm sorry, is she gonna tell us who won the second round?
She's gonna count them up.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Paul.
I really don't have a report since I've been here about three days, but I would like to fill you in a little bit on the junior high, where we are with that. Asbestos abatement guy is working as we speak. We've emptied all the oil out of the oil tanks.
Well, they did.
And I did have a rep in here today hoping we could get him cleaned out, but there isn't enough room to get in there right now until we take the roof off and take him out vertically. And the other only point is, I'd like.
How many gallons they pull out of there?
Close to 1,000.
Were we able to recover that?
I reused it all up at Public Works, so.
Awesome.
We had, we had, we had the good misfortune running out of oil one morning, so my tanks were empty, so we had some room to put it, but.
There we go.
So we did use it, so that's where we are. And the only other thing is, I'd like at some point to be able to put an RFP out to demolish the building and see where we're going. I mean, that's something you guys.
When are they removing the asbestos on the inside?
They're working on it right now.
They are?
They are. He's kind of dragging his feet a little bit on some of it because it's so cold, because he's gotta put in a shower for his guys on different asbestos.
Yep.
And since there's no heat, no power, he's kind of waiting for it to warm up a little bit, but I think he's got most of the tiles off down in the bottom.
The process on that, don't they have to be in there for only 45 minutes and they have to be out for 15 or 20?
That I, that I couldn't tell you. I mean, that's, that's his, that's his bill of weeks, but, but at some point, I'd like you guys to consider what we're doing with the building. I'd like to put an RFP out and at least get some idea what the costs are so you, we can kind of move forward. I mean.
I thought we already did that, didn't we?
No.
No, not for the demolition, so.
Not the demolition part of it.
I mean, I'm not telling you what to do, it's just, we need to do something with that building. It's starting to look pretty bad, and they're breaking in all the time, they broke in again last week, and I'm afraid at some point, somebody's gonna get hurt, and it's gonna come back on us.
How long's it gonna take these guys to finish what they're doing now, Paul? Any idea?
I haven't spoken to him. Trevor talked to him this morning, but I don't know. Like I said, he's waiting for a little bit warmer weather on some of it because of the shower thing. I think it depends on type of asbestos. If it's the friable type that can get airborne, the guys need to be able to decontaminate, and it's kind of cold right now.
Well, we can put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I'm just, like I said, I'm just, I'm just trying to move it forward, and it's, it's starting to look bad, and I'm afraid at some point, somebody's gonna break in and, God forbid, they set fire to it or something.
What are we gonna do? Are we gonna put, can't we just give them the go-ahead with putting out the feelers for getting prices?
It's up to you guys. I'd put an RFP out to, I've got at least two contractors that have reached out that are interested. I'm sure there's others.
Well, how about you just comes back with some quotes? Or what, what do you think's best, Paul?
That's what I would like to do.
We never, we never vote when you put out an RFP, do you, Paul? Just for the, for the.
No, but I don't want to do it without you guys knowing about it, do you?
Go ahead, do it. Yeah.
And that way, when we get to budget time, as we're a little further down the month here, then maybe we'll have some numbers to look at.
Yep.
Who are the two companies you've already contacted?
I've got Butler that's doing the arch demolition there at the bridge.
Yep.
And I've got another gentleman that used to be a project manager for Chimbrow Down at the bridge. He's gone on his own. He's reached out to me a couple times.
His business name?
Uh, he's Brendan Scully. I don't know if he has a business name or not. He's originally from Winslow, I believe, but, so, and I'm sure there'll be others, but these have actually reached out going, what are you guys doing? You know, they're, they're interested. So if they're interested, hopefully the pricing reflects it, you know?
Now, I remember you mentioned something about the hole and burying some of that cement inside.
That goes back to you guys, of what you guys see as far as future use for that property. If you think you're gonna build something, I'd rather not bury anything there.
No. I guess that's something we're gonna have to look in.
Definitely make a difference on.
If we plan on doing anything like that.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Well, will they break down our estimate, Paul, of if we bury stuff versus if we don't?
I'm sure we can, yeah. I'm sure we can, I'm sure there's stuff that could be left on site, the concrete, stuff that's inert. Depends how difficult it is to try to sort it out, too, I mean.
I would think, just get what you think we need to have, and we'll put it on the next agenda and get it going. Get it going.
That, that was my thought, because I'm afraid at some point, you know, you don't have to be a society, they get hurt inside, breaking in, it's still gonna fall on us. And they've been breaking in pretty steadily, so.
Yeah. What, what are they stealing, just damaging the property?
Oh, they stole the copper wire out of some of the conduits, which I can't imagine is very profitable, but not a whole lot of copper in that. But anyway, but they're still breaking in and damaging doors, and that's why I want to get the oil out.
Yep.
I've got that out anyway, so.
Okay.
Just trying to get, just trying to get it cleaned up so that when it's ready to go, that, you know, we can, we can go.
You good?
That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Any other department reports? No. Okay, finance committee reports? Any other reports, period? We, we're all good? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I need a motion to approve all the reports.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris Lebranche?
Yes.
Motion to approve all reports is presented as seven to zero. And I do, did get the tally back from Tanya, so Roy Lord and Steve Susie made the round on that time. So we've got Garrett Buzzell, Michelle Dorr, Roy Lord, Steve Susie, Lee Trahan, and Earl Watts on the Charter Review Committee.
I thought Earl Watts was just in the last vote.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. I'm looking at these, this one. Nicholas Weiss and Thomas Welch. Sorry, looking at the wrong ones.
Okay. There's no tabled business. Old business. Ordinance number 01-2025 to repeal the Winslow Public Safety Department adopted November 21st, 2022 by ordinance number 19-2022. This is a public hearing. Do you guys want people to speak before or after?
Public hearing comes before anything.
No, I understand that. Do you want people to speak, or do you want them to wait till we discuss?
The public hearing has to come before we.
Okay, I said it's a public hearing.
Yeah. They speak before we discuss.
Anybody wish to speak?
Audra's gonna read the.
I'll read it, thank you. Before anybody speaks, I'm gonna read what Audra normally reads. "We ask that any person wishing to address the council, please stand, state your name and your address. All remarks are to be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member of this council. No person other than the council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a counselor, without the permission of the chair. No question shall be asked to a counselor except through the council chair. Any persons making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall immediately be barred from further audience before the council by the council chair unless permission to continue is granted by a majority vote of the council." You have a total of three minute, I'm sorry, five minutes for this one, and we also ask that you respect the time allotted to you, and if anybody would like to speak, you're more than welcome to get up. Go ahead.
Mike Luvier, 873 Augusta Road.
Relative to the Public Safety Department, at the last meeting, we heard some pros and cons on the Public Safety Department. Under cons or justification for rejecting it or going back to the old way, one council said that staffing and overtime was a big concern. Yet another council reported that overtime spending has trended down for the past two to three years. And this was confirmed by the current spending report as of the end of December. The current overtime spending after six months was at budget for police and just slightly over for fire. Both police and fire deputy chiefs reported that they are getting closer to being fully staffed. It was also reported by council that there were morale issues. Yet the Public Safety Director, as well as two respective deputy chiefs, indicated that although there were some issues at first, morale is currently good and everything is fine, quote unquote. This can be somewhat supported by the fact that no grievances have been filed over the last two years. Another con that was reported was that all other communities that have tried this approach have returned back to traditional police and fire departments. A very simple Google search today found that this statement to be false. The town of Hampton clearly has a public safety department, and a public safety director is listed on their website. Several other towns, including Arundel, Casco, and Standish, also list public safety departments on their websites. But some of these towns are integrated with Sheriff's Department and State Police, so it might not be comparing apples to apples, but nonetheless, they still exist. I looked no further than that, and I only Googled towns. I did not look at cities, so I figured towns would, would be more of a population similar to ours. That said, some of the items proposed as cons actually turned out to be pros. Morale is good, overtime is trending down, and staffing is improving in both departments. These are all positives. With the current proposal to add interfacility transfer, I would think that the current structure would allow the deputy fire chief more time to focus on this new venture, as we've heard reports that this could be very challenging. While the Public Safety Director continues to handle more of the administration duties, especially with the budget season upon us. I think one very important point brought up by former principal Carl Price at the last meeting was that regarding emergency plans for our schools in the event of a crisis, he stated that there used to be a gap between fire and police, and that situation has improved since the creation of the Public Safety Department. I think this unanticipated benefit that could result in better communication, coordination, and protection of some of our most vulnerable citizens, the children in our schools, is more than enough to justify keeping the Public Safety Department. Although the current department heads answer to the town manager and, of course, directed in part by the town council, it is us, the citizens of this town, that are the customers and the taxpayers that support these efforts. Thank you for your consideration.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
My name is Scott Holstead of at one-three-three Cushman Road in Winslow. Right from the get-go of this Public Safety Director position, I have always been against it. Worked in the system now for almost forty-five years. I worked under a Public Safety Director position for a while. It creates a lot of havoc. Your employees are gonna tell you that things are going smoothly, because they don't want retaliation, and trust me, I've seen a lot of it. Winslow has always had a fire chief. In nineteen ninety-one, they went to a full-time fire chief. Everything was running smoothly until two thousand and four, when Mr. Bill Page, a fire chief, was told he had to run a dual fire department with City of Waterville. This drove Winslow's department, to me, down even further. Winslow's trucks were being neglected because Bill cannot stand by and run his department the way he wanted to run it. When Bill left in two thousand and eight, when Dave LaFountain took over, same thing happened again. When Sean Esther gets hired in two thousand and eighteen in Waterville, Winslow decides to go on her own, which truly was the blessing for the town of Winslow, because the new fire chief came in, we got better equipment, we had somebody to watch over our department. Now, we're back into another Public Safety Director position again, where you have a police chief in charge of the fire department. And when I came to the public meetings about this Public Safety Director, I told the town manager at the time, we needed somebody, if you're gonna run this position, that knows both sides of the department. We did not get one. And McDade, he's done the best he can, but he'll tell you flat out every single time he talks that he doesn't know what he's doing. He has to rely on Mike Murphy. I have the utmost respect for him, and I think Mike is doing a very good job in the position that he's doing. I'd like to see the Public Safety Director position go away, let Mr. McDade run his fire, uh, police department, because he needs to have attention to that police department, and the same thing with the fire department. Have that fire chief pay attention to our department. Mike knows, he's been around for thirty, thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-five years, and he can run in facility transports, and he can run his fire department, and he can run his ambulance service. I think he's doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Bill Carey, China Road. First off, the signs on the police and fire buildings, cars, and trucks have not changed. They say police or fire. In front of the town office, it says, hiring police officer, not public safety. Back in the day, I have seen a cop leave his car to drive an ambulance, and then we went to get the cruiser, because that's what we did back then. Everybody pitched in to drive an ambulance if you had to. I know that if my wife saw an officer in a situation and he, and he needed a hand, she would jump in without hesitation, as I would, and as so would all of you. We don't need an invisible title to do what's needed. No one would lose their jobs if returned to the separate departments, and maybe we don't need a deputy chief, fire chief at this time to increase costs. There may be those that won't apply because of the public's safety department title, which is up to them, but this was an experiment, so we should go back to the separate departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Steve Susie, one Sam Street, Winslow. Based on my research, the, what I could find was a two thousand sixteen study from University of Michigan. Out of all the states, municipalities that they interviewed, all took at least one to two years to make a decision, so it wasn't something that was taken lightly. Fire Chief Rodriguez resigned in November of twenty-two. The first town council vote for the Public Safety Department was on November fourteenth. Exactly a week later, on November twenty-first, it was formally approved and adopted. Think wasn't even dry on Chief Rodriguez's resignation letter. So I'm not, I'm thinking not a whole lot of research went into it. And remember, I, I keep hearing it's all under the guise of a cost savings, but it's also important to remember that the town budget consists of more than just the fire department and police department. There are several departments within the town, and all must be considered when you're looking at a true cost savings to the taxpayer. That same meeting, there was also an approval for a contract with Haley Ward, Inc. for a municipal facility study not to exceed forty-nine thousand dollars at the same time that you voted in the Public Safety Department to save money. The amount of money that was actually spent on that project was twenty-seven thousand dollars, or twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-eight cents. But what did we get for it? Does anybody know where that project study is? Has anybody read it? Three months later, on thirteen February, two thousand twenty-three, the council, this council authorized the town manager, town manager to advertise for a second full-time public works foreman with a take-home vehicle with all the associated costs. The town added a finance manager position, which was originally a temporary admin position funded through COVID. An admin position was added to the tax assessor office. The added deputy police chief has a take-home vehicle, which is added cost, wear and tear, gas and maintenance. So I'm not sure exactly where the cost saving is. The town website, under the Public Safety tab for staff, staffing and salary comparisons for the Public Safety Department, it's, it's actually incorrect if you go to the website and take a look, because the police lieutenant position isn't added into the Public Safety Department. The lieutenant position is still there at a cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. During last year's budget cycle, some counselors were pushing to approve the Public Safety Department. Who were, who are pushing for the Public Safety Department are the same counselors that voted in to approve a six-point-five increase on the school budget, because they were listening to the experts. The Public Safety Director admitted during the last town, town council meeting that if we move forward with facility transfers, that we should look to dismantle the Public Safety Department. During the last town council meeting, a counselor stated, "But right now, the three men in this town that know the most about this recommend it stays." Things have changed. It's time to listen to the experts. The Public Safety Director has submitted a letter suggesting that we dismantle the Public Safety Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Lisa Carey, China Road. So I work for, obviously, the fire department, and I have utmost respect for Mike, utmost respect for Chief McDade, but the two things need to be separate. I mean, it's, it is. I mean, it's, it's two, it's apples and oranges. You don't mix them. You know, it's just, it works better. You say morale is good, morale is good, but just because morale is good doesn't mean, you know, the behind-the-scenes stuff doesn't, you know, get in the way. We all work together. We do our job, and we do, do our job to the best of our ability. But, you know, we need somebody who knows what we're talking about when we go to them with an issue. We don't need, I don't need to go to Deputy McDade about something that has to do with EMS, because he has no clue what, what we're talking about. You know, it has to be explained to him. So just let Mike do Mike's job, and Chief McDade do Chief McDade's job, and everybody will continue to be happy.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So I don't see anyone else that wishes to speak, so now we have discussion. And I sponsored this, so I'll be the first. I do have permission to read this letter, and I am going to read it, because I know a lot of people don't really understand what, even what the Public Safety Department is. If I went down a street and asked five people, tell me what a Public Safety Department is, they don't know. So I'm gonna, just gonna read this letter. Hopefully, it'll put people's minds to rest. This is from the deputy, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Director himself, McDade. "Please accept my reasons why I feel dismantling the Public Safety Department is the correct decision at this time for the town of Winslow. Interfacility transfers will need the full attention and expertise of the fire chief. Hiring, training, and retention of police officers will need the full attention of a police chief. Service to the public will not be affected. Response times to the public will not be affected. The cost should remain the same with the adjustments we have made to this year's budgets. The morale of all fire and police employees is excellent. Nothing will change. Deputy Chief Murphy is an experienced, knowledgeable veteran firefighter who is ready and fully qualified to become a chief, fire chief, I'm sorry. The majority of counselors have voted and believe this is the correct direction for the town. I would like to personally thank all fire and police employees for their effort and cooperation over the last two years. When the pub, Public Safety Department was created, not all employees were happy with the decision. But I'm happy to report that we have all worked together despite our differences and developed a mutual respect. It has been an honor for me to serve with you all, and I hope I treated you with dignity and compassion. Thank you for this opportunity. Respectfully submitted, Leonard R. McDade." So when you have your deputy, I mean, sorry, your director of your Public Safety Department telling you he feels it's time to dismantle, maybe we should listen. And that's about all I have to say. Anybody else? Can we go into a motion to vote to repeal the Public Safety Department?
Before we do that, can you make, clarify, if we vote yes, we're voting to repeal, correct?
Yes, to repeal the Winslow Public Safety Department.
Thank you.
A vote of yes would be to repeal.
Correct.
So-
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Any discussion? Audrey, can we have a roll call, please?
Motion to repeal the Winslow Public Safety Department adopted November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two by ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand twenty-two. Mike, uh, Lee Trahan, sorry?
No.
Jeff West?
No.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
No.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebrun?
Yes.
And Adam Lent?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
New business? Now, this ordinance was written as one ordinance, but I'm going to motion to divide it into two separate, because one is talking about the ambulance service, and one is talking about regular nine-one-one calls, the other is talking about interfacility transfers, which you could be for one and not the other, so maybe we should separate them and vote on each one. Keep in mind, the ambulance service vote isn't going to be whether or not we allow the ambulance service. It's actually to be, it was written as an order, which it should never have been written as an order. It needs to be written as an ordinance. So the vote will be to simply take the wording from the order and place it on an ordinance where it should be legally anyway. So that would be the first vote. Your second vote would be, I believe I have the correct wording. At the fire department's discretion, the fire department will provide interfacility transfers within the state of Maine. So this ordinance is going to be a motion first to divide into two.
Hmm, no.
No.
What's the first one?
No, we have to take thing, we have to suspend the rules.
No, we don't. I've already spoken to Bill Lee. I've got his email if you guys all want a copy of it.
Okay, because the way this ordinance is written, is the town of Winslow's existing ambulance service is expanded to allow interfacility transfers within the state of Maine, but the fire department's- is expanded to allow inter-facility transfers within the state of Maine at the fire department's discretion.
The only reason that they, Bill thought it should be divided was because he noticed, looking into this one, that the original ambulance service was written as an order.
Correct.
And he wants to switch it. If you guys want to vote just on this one, you're not gonna have an order for the ambulance service. So it's up to you guys.
Technically, if I, technically, the ambulance service was not formed properly back.
Correct.
Eight, whatever it was. It was done by order. Charter required it be done by ordinance.
Do we need to add an ordinance for that after the fact?
You can divide an, any, you can divide any ordinance you want. It's part of Robert's rules. You can divide an ordinance.
Yes, the, the, the rules say that you're only supposed to have one subject per item. This has two. So any counselor can make a motion to divide the question, which Fran's done. And we'll divide it into two ordinances. And I think if you haven't, the, the way Bill Lee put it
Yep.
was, was, was good.
I have copies if everyone wants to see the way it's written. Do you guys want to see?
So, I don't have, yeah, I, just a copy, just a follow-up, that's all. But at first, it's the motion to divide the question. Into those two ordinances. That's all, one motion to divide the question into, and then read the two that Bill Lee, ordinance one and ordinance two.
Yep.
And then we'll vote on ordinance one. And then we'll vote on ordinance two.
Right.
And then we'll get into the issue of public hearings when that time comes.
Yep. So do we have a motion to divide the ordinance?
I'll move that we divide, divide the question on uh, number zero-two-two-two-five.
I'll second.
Uh, excuse me, um.
Thanks.
That should not have been the motion. The motion should include, can we strike that motion? I'll call that motion. The motion should be, I'm moved to divide the ordinance number zero-two-two-oh-two-five into two ordinances. First one being, the fire department will provide ambulance service for all calls arising within the town of Winslow and request for mutual aid. The second division will be an ordinance that at the fire department's discretion, the fire department will provide inter-facility transfers within the state of Maine. That's the motion.
I thought that's what I just said. But that's okay.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I just want to make it clear that when you're voting on the first one, you're voting from an order, just to put it as an ordinance. You're not voting, say, oh, hey, do you still want ambulance service or not? Bill wanted me to make sure that was clear. So we have a motion to go into vote? Any other discussion?
Motion vote.
Roll call, please.
I just want to make sure I'm correct. This is just the motion to divide these into two.
Yes.
Um, Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Jeff West?
Yes.
So motion to divide the ordinance is into two, passes seven to zero.
And now we'll have to have a motion to.
Uh, just for a point of order, if I may, for Audra to sign, assign numbers to that. Do you do that now for the ordinance or do you do it later?
Um, I.
Why not? I'm gonna have to get a new number.
So.
Yeah, or probably order's number three.
But you have to get a new number?
So this.
Yeah, you don't have a number three yet this year. You can do two and three.
Well, that's, I'm just trying to make sure this, this ordinance is gonna go away. And we'll make that into one portion of it. And then we'll give the fire department's discretion, the fire department provide inner facility transfers will be order number, or ordinance number, excuse me, three dash two thousand twenty-five.
Yes.
Are we ready to get a motion to vote on one?
Motion vote.
Should we have our public hearing?
I don't, it's not gonna be counted as a public hearing, I don't believe, only, only because it's new. Even though we had a pub, we already had one vote on the.
On the, the ambulance one is the, is the, the one that's messing this whole thing up because it wasn't done right.
Right.
We just established an ordinance for it. As if it was new today.
Right.
So we have to take a vote on that ordinance to approve or deny. We couldn't, I suppose, deny the ambulance service.
No, you can't. I already asked Bill. You cannot. You cannot. It was put in as an order. You can't get rid.
But if we're establishing a new ordinance, it takes two readings. It takes the public hearing.
Yep, do the public hearing.
So we can have the first reading tonight on the ambulance. We can't have the public hearing because it wasn't publicized.
Right.
So we can have the second reading and the public hearing next meeting on the ambulance one.
Yep, I knew that too, yeah.
Yeah.
And your public hearing can still be on the transfers. This could be the final one on that one, right? Yep. All right, so, phew, let's go into, uh, voting for number one. Can I have a motion to go?
Motion vote.
My second.
Second.
I'll restate what you're voting on. The fire department, this is for a switch from an order to an ordinance only. And it is concerning, the fire department will provide ambulance services for all calls arising within the town of Winslow and request for mutual aid. Roll call, please, Audra.
Uh, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Can I have a motion for part two? At the fire department's discretion, the fire department will provide inter-facility transfers with the in-state of Maine, within the state of Maine. And I'm so sorry, if this is a public hearing, then they are allowed to speak, correct?
Correct.
Uh, yes.
So, yep, if anybody would like to speak on the inter-facility transfers, you can do so at this time?
You're noisy.
Mike Louvier, eight-seven-three Augusta Road. Uh, at the last meeting, I was present and it, there was some discussion on putting on limits as to how far that they would travel. And at this point, it says, it's worded a little different. It says that it would be at the discretion. I'd just like to have some clarification. I mean, I can't see that it would be worth making a trip to Mattawaska, Maine this time of year to do a transfer, just for clarity.
For clarity, I'll just say, I should, I'm sorry, I probably didn't read it, within the state of Maine. So they'll happen within the state of Maine.
Oh, finish public hearing. I'm gonna move to amend that.
What's that?
Finish the public hearing first. We'll discuss that as part of our discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I was just answering his question, but go ahead. Anybody else like to speak? Yep.
Dana Mitchell, Simpson Avenue, Winslow, Maine. My question is, on these transfers, does the money that they get on these transfers go into the fire department account or does it go into the general fund account?
General fund.
Because when it was first set out, that money was going to the fire department. And that's how it's set up in water bowl. And they got a good chunk of change in there right now. And that's what should be happening with this money. So he can operate that. You guys wouldn't be under. You'd be going pretty good. Because there's a lot of money there.
Good point.
And I think you should, I think that that money shouldn't have been transferred to the general fund. It should be put in the fire department fund so Mr. Murphy can run his department the way it should. And he'll have money, lots of money to help get his paramedics and all these people in there. And I think you guys ought to take a good look at that. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Can we have a motion to go into voting for part two?
Uh, council discussion first?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. You're right. Discussion?
Motion before, motion before discussion?
No, we don't motion for discussion.
To discuss.
We just discuss. So I would like to, I'm gonna address what he just asked and say, the revenue part of it, he is absolutely correct. It would be a lot easier to figure out the numbers, um, if it was that way. It was that way in the beginning. Maybe it should be looked at again. But as far as the transfers go, I think it's a win-win.
Through the chair, um, why was it changed to begin with?
The auditors.
What's that?
The auditors.
The auditors? What, what did the auditor say?
Actually, actually, I think what we're doing right now is discussing if we're actually going to pass this. So let's do that.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Dale, I'm sorry.
All the discussions we had last time, as the extent of where we were gonna go for inter-facility transfers, uh, Mr. Murphy was pretty adamant that it was gonna be just Portland, Lewiston, Bangor, and Augusta. Uh, and this says state of Maine. So I would move to amend that ordinance to strike out state of Maine. And, um, will provide inter-facility transfers, uh, to Portland, Lewiston, Augusta, and Bangor. He was very adamant that he wasn't going to the whole state of Maine.
I think, I think the way it's written was to, um, normally doing transfers, you will be doing them to Bangor, Portland, um, Lewiston. That's the normal go, but if you wanna maybe ask Mike?
It's still listed at the fire department's discretion.
It's at his discretion. So the way it's written, it's up to the fire department where they're going, when they need to go, I think. And as long as it's in the state of Maine, it doesn't matter where
Correct.
they're going.
Can we hear from Mike, see what he has to say, by any chance?
Yeah.
Do you have to suspend the rules for you to speak?
Oh, no.
Okay. Well, no, I just.
Nope.
You might have to be a motion.
Your department head.
Okay. So, we had a discussion about this, um, when it came up. And I actually, when it first came up, I had asked why statewide? You're right. I'm not gonna go to Mattawaska just because I wanna go to Mattawaska.
It's not worth it.
It, right. It's not worth it. Um, there's too much headache. However, you can't really just lock it down to certain facilities legally according to what the town attorney said. So that's why they blanketed it statewide.
We can go, we don't have to, we don't have to go to every place in the state. That's not a legal consideration.
No, we don't. And it's at my discretion of where we go. And I'm not saying I'm gonna go to Mattawaska or Fort Kent or anything like that. But it should be at least statewide. So if there is an emergent transfer somewhere, it covers all those areas. Cause I'm going to Southern Maine, I'm going to Northern Maine, and I'm going to Western Wild.
So you've changed your mind since last time, then? Last time, you were adamant about limiting to a certain Portland, Bangor.
That's still the same, that's what I'm talking about.
And now you're saying you might go anywhere in the state of Maine?
Portland, Bangor, and Lewiston is anywhere in the state of Maine. For hospital-wise, they're not grouped together. They're.
Oh, you can go to Kittery. You can go to Hope and Fort Kent.
Mike, I guess I'm gonna stop you there. Have you said everything you've wanted to say?
Yes.
Dale, are you finished?
Yes, but I will make a motion to.
Mike, you're excused.
The ordinance to include, to include inter-facility transfers only to Portland, Bangor, Lewiston, and Augusta. My motion. Is there a second?
Hearing, no second. I think that's defeated.
I'll second it.
So you're motioning for an amendment to the wording of leaving it to the fire chief's discretion on where he's going to run his ambulance service. Am I understanding that correct?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I will, my motion was to amend it. The fire department will provide in facility transfers to Portland, Bangor, Lewiston, and Augusta. That was my amendment. I take the word at the fire department's discretion. Uh, when you say discretion, they have the discretion whether to even do the inter-facility transfers or not. They don't have to do it.
No, they don't. And you're also asking then for them to limit which ones they can do, when they can do more.
Discussion was last meeting. If he wants to change his mind tonight, fine, let him change his mind. But I made the motion.
Okay, let's do the, uh, let's vote on his amendment to that motion. Can I have a roll call?
Uh, Jeff West?
No.
Mike Joseph?
No.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
No.
Doris LaBranche?
No.
Adam Lent?
No.
And Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Motion fails five to two.
So we already, uh, now we're moving into the motion to actually vote on it. We already got a first and a second, didn't we? We didn't?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna motion.
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Uh, discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion again? No discussion. Let's have a roll call, please.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Marcy LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
No.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Dale Macklin?
No.
Motion passes five to.
That was the second public hearing, so that, part of that is finished, inter-facility transfers as a go, right?
The second reading will be, need a second reading.
That was the.
Next month.
I thought we already discussed that. We already had the first reading on inter-facility transfers.
No.
This says public hearing right on it. So that would mean this would be the second reading.
This is under new business, which means it's the first time we've just, we voted on it.
Hmm.
And we had the public hearing tonight. Last public, last month was a, just a discussion.
Why does it say public hearing?
Cause it's the first reading of the ordinance. We have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing comes on the second time we speak about.
Not all the time.
Okay, let's go on.
No. So, just for clarification, I think there will be a second reading on the ambulance and a public hearing next month. And the second reading only for the inter-facility transfers.
Right, unless we can get it done before then, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So let's go on to order number zero-one-two-dash-two, what, two-zero-two-five. The town manager is authorized to pay statewide asbestos removal, a total of a hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four from the fund balance account, one zero dash thirty-nine thousand.
My understanding is we voted to allow, uh, approve that contract last time. We just didn't approve where the money was coming from.
Correct.
So we're voting on where it's coming from.
And that's all this is doing is dictating it's coming from fund balance.
So I'm a second.
Discussion.
What do we have in the fund balance?
I believe it's six-point-one, I believe.
Somewhere, yeah.
Yep, six-point-one million, yep.
Okay. I'll take your word for it.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Any more discussion? All right, so can we have a roll call, please?
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lent?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Uh, yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Uh, Paul, do you need to wave, wave the second reading on that?
Not really. He's already had a deposit and by the time he's done, we'll be back to second readings. In no rush.
Are we all set? All right, moving on. This one's tricky, cause there's a lot of blanks. The town manager is authorized to allocate blank for the acquisition of a blank. From the blank, the funds will be taken from the fire truck capital. Somebody wanna explain it? It's not sponsored, so I have no idea who it is. Hi, Michael.
So, we had a discussion, um, when we were working on the budgets about the utility, um, our utility trucks. Twenty years old, we started making talks about replacing it. However, shortly, even before we'd really started discussing it, it was more of a thought, it finally was responding to a call, and, um, it kinda blew up. So, um, it blew the head. It's a twenty-year-old truck. It's two thousand and five. To fix it the right way, um, it's about roughly seventeen thousand dollars. And to replace the motor altogether, it's twenty-two thousand. So, I went to Ella, uh, actually, I went to Lenny first, then we did the, through the command. And they had asked about replacing it, because, um, we need it. We use it on a daily basis. And then we looked, we started looking, and I checked and double-checked on vehicles. I gave a whole bunch. However, today, I actually started calling on Friday to see how many of the ones that I presented to you are still available. Not many. I have two hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars in my capital for a fire truck. The fire truck, the utility that we're looking at is in New Hampshire. It's for roughly sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's, already has a service body on it. If I buy one locally, they have to take the fleet side off in it. So, it'll be a basic pickup truck. They'll have to take the fleet side off it and put the u, service body on it. Which, so it's fifty-one thousand for the new truck, and then whatever it costs for the utility body. I found one in New Hampshire. Um, it's a twenty-twenty-three Ram twenty-five-hundred Tradesman. It is pretty much the same as what we have now, but it's readily, readily available. They have three of them in stock. Talked with Paul. He told me whatever I need, you know, what, get whatever I think this will fit our needs. And I have the money in the budget, and it won't cost, it won't come out of taxes, cause it's already there.
Is this one that had some mileage on it, Mike?
So, the one that I did find, I found a used one, um, that had low miles. However, it had over two hundred thousand miles in idling hours. So, yeah. And unfortunately, looking at the service trucks, everybody idles them. So, they have huge idling, they may have low miles, but they have a ton of.
Idling miles.
Idle miles on them. Because nobody's gonna shut their truck off this time of year. So.
Now, the truck we have, is that gas or diesel?
That was diesel.
Now, this one here we're looking at is the gas?
It is gas.
Now, we're changing over to gas because of what?
One, it's to fix it is cheaper, and everybody statewide is going from back to gas.
Yeah. Now, Paul, and the trucks go to gas too, uh, the truck, town trucks?
Not our big trucks. Our big trucks are still diesel, but.
The other ones are.
The school buses have all gone to gas.
All the school buses?
All the units are all gas. They just idle, diesel's not idle, idle well with the emissions they have now. They just plug up and they're problems.
With all the def, we, we find that a lot. Um, I don't have it here, cause our ambulances. But when I worked in Fairfield, our trucks didn't like the, the idle and the def. Especially the smaller vehicles. Not necessarily apparatus, but the smaller pickup trucks had def issues.
Through the chair.
Jeff.
So, that capital account that you talked about, Mike, is that the one where we're supposed to take to pay for the truck that's on order right now?
Yes.
So, why don't we just take it up, why don't we just take the money out of the general fund? We have it. And leave that alone.
That's totally up to you.
He has a lot in his capital fund, though.
That's for the, that's for the new fire truck.
But we've already paid the first payment of the other truck.
Capital account is what I'm, but is that what you're saying as far as the next payment due?
The next payment, and then the final payment and all that.
Correct. Right, right.
Why don't we just take the money out of the general fund, leave that capital account alone?
Okay.
We have, we have the money there to do it.
I thought we were finding, that, the tanker truck you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
The seven fifty? We put two fifty down out of.
Correct.
Fund balance.
And we already made our, you used the fund balance for that?
And we had a hundred and twenty-five or something in there already.
And it, then it re-upped with the budget?
And we're gonna put another hundred and twenty-something in this year.
At the end of, at the end of it, wasn't it, we still owed like eighty thousand dollars or something like that?
Yeah, it wasn't much. It was, cause I double-checked and checked this. So, it was on the, um.
So, I guess my point is, if it's like eighty-something thousand, we're gonna have to take out at the end to pay for that truck when it's delivered. The apparatus, not this particular truck we're talking about. Let's just pay the cash for the sixty-eight thousand right now, out of the general fund. Leave the capital account alone for now. That way, when that, when that truck gets delivered, we can make that final payment, sixty-eight thousand dollars less.
The only thought I have was, capital account is for what he's looking for. That is what the money's supposed to be used for. If you're gonna.
Well, we've already allotted that money.
You've allotted some of it.
So, the.
Not all of it. You've got plenty left over.
So, just out of this, um, I got a sticky note from our finance. The two hundred and fifty dollars came out of the undesi, uh, undesignated fund balance, not the capital account.
The two hundred and fifty thousand?
So, you've already taken money.
But that's what this two hundred and fifty thousand that you have currently.
Is for the next payment, correct.
For the next payment.
Got you.
For the pump truck.
For the pump, uh, for the tanker.
Tanker, sorry.
So, we've got the sixty-eight thousand dollars in the general fund. Just take it out. Instead of moving it around later. It's either take it out now or take it out later, but with all the other expenses we've got coming, we don't know what we're gonna have in there at the time.
Right.
We know we have that money there now.
Through the chair. Mike, um, now, that, that truck there is gonna cost us what, sixty-seven thousand? But then we have to have it wired for lighting?
Correct. We're gonna take as much as we can off the current utility that we have. The light bar, the radio's brand-new, cause we got it with a grant. Um, the li, the siren, the light box. It's just, we need to add, it has to have three sixty lighting, and it has to have three sixty striping.
So, is that another eight thousand?
Anywhere between eight to ten.
So, we're talking probably seventy-eight thousand now?
Correct. I hadn't got that far yet.
Okay.
Easing into it.
Right.
You get the truck first.
Right.
What's your total, Mike?
My total, so, my total to buy the truck is sixty-eight, and then another ten grand, so seventy, it'll be right around seventy-eight. And I'm not saying I'm gonna use the entire thing. I'm gonna try to do it as cost-effective as I can, and with the best, you know what I mean? Get it done right, and get it done. But I have to, I have to light it, and I have to reflect it, period, to be an emergency vehicle.
What are we using now, that we don't have one?
Uh, we are using my chief's vehicle as the utility. And I'm running my personal vehicle, um, when I'm off duty to come to the station.
The way this is written, though, if you're going to take it from the undesignated or general fund, you're gonna have to reword this, amend the way it's written, cause it says, "Take the money from the capital account."
It's just a wording change.
Yeah, if you suggested taking that out of what you count?
Just take it out of the general fund.
Fund balance or general?
Fund balance.
Yes, fund balance, not general fund, general fund.
You mean the undesignated, is that what you're saying?
The undesignated fund.
The undesignated fund.
Yep.
There's a motion you guys can make and amend that.
Yeah, you're gonna amend that. You can't leave it. It's a change. Does everybody agree with taking it out of the undesignated? Doris, did you have something?
I have a question through the chair. Um, how much is it gonna be to get rid of the truck you have?
Um, so, that was, that's going to go to auction, and I have no idea. It will go to a public auction. You don't ask, right, Paul, on how much? You just put it out for designated?
Well, especially if it's not running, we're not, we can't get too fussy with it.
Well, it's running. We just don't know how far it's gonna run.
And how much do you have right now in your, um, in your?
My tax truck made it to Florida.
The, uh, fire truck capital account?
Two six, uh, two sixty-three, one sixty-four, eighty-nine.
That's the number Jeff has set aside for the tanker truck.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Those bonds were set aside for the tanker trucks, so we can make one final payment the day it's delivered.
Yes.
As I said, don't mess with what we got going there. Just take it out of the.
Yep.
That's completely.
So, I'd make a motion to reword this, to allocate up to seventy-eight thousand dollars for the acquisition of said truck, and coming from.
Undesignated.
Undesignated funds. Second.
Discussion? How about a roll call?
Okay. Going way too fast, Maureen. Sorry.
Mike, are you good with the seventy-eight?
Yes, very. Because whatever, e, even if it goes over.
Going to a scam.
A thousand dollars, I have that in my.
Capital.
That isn't gonna hurt. You know what I mean? Like, but I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna try to do it fiscally responsibly. Get, you know, I'm not going for the gusto here to make this thing look like a Christmas tree. I just need it to be three sixty, so.
It's legal.
It's legal, correct.
And where's that coming from?
What's that?
What's the deal there? Cause there's a gap here for.
It is, so, it would be on here, it would be, uh, so, it's customtruck.com, but it's coming out of Hookset, and I can get you.
You know what quote number it is? Just so I.
Do we need, where he's buying it from in there? Well, you guys have a gap.
Yeah. So, customtruck one source is the, is the, uh.
Well, I'm going to Hookset this weekend. I can pick it up.
I'm going to Boston on Friday, too, so. Not that far of a change to go get it, but.
I'm just trying to fill in the blanks that there was left here.
Correct. But I can actually get you the actual, um.
I mean, a six.
Yeah, six, right. But the website, so, we just did a, a general within two hundred and fifty miles search for a service truck around the state of Maine. Unfortunately, Maine is really expensive compared to everybody else.
You did good, Mike.
Just remember, you're gonna pay taxes when you bring it back to Maine.
Tax exempt.
They'll have to catch me. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Totally kidding.
Are we caught up, Audrey? Are we ready to go?
I think so. Uh, Adam Lind?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Brent Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebrun?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
I would make, no, shouldn't we forego the second reading?
Please.
Second.
And that was to change the wording?
No.
No.
Forego the second reading?
I know, but did we ever change the wording of where you were taking the money?
That was a vote on the amendment.
That's what we voted.
Right.
We had a vote as amended.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. My bad.
Okay, so, that, that was to change the wording, and now, to restate a motion, we're going to try to get a vote to approve the deputy chief getting a, um, a new utility truck.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you. Discussion? Are we discussion done now?
Well, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Think we beat that one.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Audrey.
Adam Lind?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Brent Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris Lebrun?
Yes.
Motion to approve as amended passes seven to zero.
Now, I'll make a motion. We forego the second reading.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Adam Lind?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Brent Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris Lebrun?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading passes seven to zero.
Get an invoice or something?
Yeah, I will, so I will call tomorrow, and I'll let you, I'll let Paul know, and then he can let you guys know.
Yeah, you don't wanna hesitate. They're going fast, aren't they?
We had one that was, is what, you know, we thought was a good deal, and it was gone within.
Through the chair. I have a question, Mike. I had talked to you. There was a resident that mentioned about nine-one-one, about some roads that were changed back ten years ago.
Right, yeah, for, uh, it was like.
Did you find out anything about?
I did. I talked to Garrett. He's looking into it. I am not the nine-one-one address.
Okay.
Garrett is, code enforcement does the E-nine-one-one addressing, so that would be through him. So, he's gonna look into it, and kinda the same thing with Pickarole Point that, that I had told you about. They're gonna, they'll go in and fix it.
Okay.
They'll make the correct changes on the Google Maps and whatnot, so it, it reflects the right roads that were changed.
Just, just to make it clear with the public, it was roads that were changed probably about ten years ago, and there was an incident up on, I think it was on Marie Street, because there was two names that were, they're pretty identical. And there was several names that were changed on the roads. I think Fuller Lane, Fuller, and Fuller Road. Anyways, yeah, so, they changed it, but yet, when you punch in, let's say, uh, you put Hemlock Road, it came up to Leo Street. And, you know, people can get confused. And this resident was concerned about, you know, ambulance service or down the road and say, "Well, we're on the wrong road. Why is it saying this?" And that's, I was asking Mike about it, which is just so you people know.
And it happens, unfortunately, it happens quite a bit. And if you, if they don't know about it, they can't fix it.
Right.
So, I'm working with Garrett to get it changed.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Yep.
Moving on to D, order number three dash two thousand twenty-five. Dale, I know you had mentioned, yep.
I'm gonna pull that. The reason being is I was informed, brought to my attention, that that is a sale of town property that should be an executive session issue, uh, for the council to decide different things, how to sell, what to sell, how to do it. Uh, and as a concern for the public, anyway, we would have an executive session on it. The council will decide what to do, and then we will have the agenda item on the agenda for the public hearing and all that stuff after the, the executive session. So, Audrey, I would pull that, or Fran, I'd pull that and have it set up for an executive session. That's helpful.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just questioning why you would have an executive session to discuss it, but then have a public hearing and discuss it anyway?
It's not, not a public hearing. It's on the agenda. It won't be a public hearing. It'll be on the agenda to approve whatever we decide. And then the public, regular public comment portion would apply. The three-minute one, not the fireman one.
You sponsored this, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yep, so you can remove it if you'd like.
Through the chair. Christie, did you have something you wanted to say about that? No? Okay.
Do we have to vote for all that, or what?
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, letter E, order number four dash two thousand twenty-five. The Town Council of Windsor authorizes the town manager to proceed with the reconstruction of the Fort Halifax stage with a budget cap of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. An agreement will be made with Kennebec Timber Framing for the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty for the stage construction, and with Dixon, I'm sorry, Dixon Concrete for twenty thousand. Additionally, miscellaneous electrical and lighting costs are estimated to total fifteen thousand. The project entails a complete rebuild of the stage structure. The fin, funding for this project will be sourced from the Fort Halifax capital account.
We received a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars from the insurance for the stage, which is what this amount, I believe we can build it for this price.
I'm so sorry. You said you got how much?
A hundred and twenty-two thousand that came from insurance, which is the ma, the amount I'm asking to expend. Originally, the budget came in at three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So, I think we've done pretty go, pretty good to bring it down to a reasonable price.
And the eighty-six thousand and the fifteen thousand, that's all gonna come from what?
That's all coming from those insurance.
From the one twenty-two?
From the one twenty-two, correct.
Cause there's three separate prices here.
Correct.
Okay.
That includes the FEMA funds, while?
Do we get FEMA funds for that?
We haven't gotten anything, we haven't heard anything from FEMA now in a couple of months, and nobody knows if they still exist. So I'm not counting much on FEMA.
Through the chair, Paul?
Yes.
How's this gonna be anchored, is it gonna be the same place that the other stage?
It's gonna be the same place, it's a concrete fort, it's a six-foot foundation into the ground.
Six foot?
Yes.
So it should stay there this time?
I hope so.
I hope so, too.
There's no guarantees, but no, it's, it's a solid foundation, it's all concrete, concrete slab, and the structure on top. The electrical is kind of hit or miss, 'cause we really haven't done a whole lot of design, but I know they're gonna want some lighting, they're gonna want some electrical for performers.
Is the other one already torn down?
The other one's long gone.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
At the point, we will be doing the earthwork, the town will, public works. So... And we're looking mid-June, I guess, before he can come into concrete, so... Just give you guys a timeline.
Thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
You don't need to put any deposits down or anything, right?
I don't know. The other one, they pretty much dealt with the timber framers, I don't think I need anything with Dixon, but I know we wanna sign a contract with the timber framer, so...
Do we need to waive the second reading, Paul?
I'll make a motion.
It wouldn't hurt if we can get this thing going and lock them in.
Second.
I hate to do that, but...
What do we...
Forego the second reading.
And, any discussion? Could we have a vote on foregoing the second reading? Roll call, please.
She's getting there.
We gotta teach her shorthand.
Gotta get her a laptop or something.
Uh, Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
And Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading, passes seven to zero.
So sorry, I lost my place here. Uh, G, order number six dash two thousand twenty...
F.
I'm so sorry, I knew I did. F, order number zero-five, two thousand twenty-five, authorization for the interim town manager to sign a water line easement agreement with Kennebec Water District.
This has to do with installing a water line for the football field on Benton Avenue. The water line right now comes through the old junior high, and that's been shut off and never to be reopened, 'cause apparently the valves are in pretty bad shape.
So where's it coming?
So, we're gonna come off Hollingsworth.
Okay.
But there's a section of Hollingsworth, apparently when that was, that used to be Boston Ave, way before me, it was, there was never an easement granted to the water district for their line that's there, so they're asking us to provide them an easement so they have access to that line. It's a formality, but they won't hook onto it until they get an easement.
Okay.
And I believe the school is actually paying for the cost of easement, as far as the, the legal fees.
You know what the cost of that is?
How about we go into a motion, verse the vote on it, and then go into discussion, does that sound good?
Some of them.
Can we?
Sorry.
Thank you. Discussion?
You're looking at a couple thousand dollars, I believe.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Jeff West?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
You need that one to go by, too?
No, that can wait.
Okay.
H, order number seven dash...
G.
G. No, I know, I crossed it off. Order number zero-six, two thousand twenty-five, authorization for the town manager to execute a contract with T-Buck Construction for Phase Two of the Chaffey Brook Pump Station Upgrades. This spec, this specifically pertains to the update of the pump station with a total contract amount not to exceed four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine?
Four million.
Four million.
Okay, hold on.
I wish, but...
Okay, four million, I'm sorry, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Some of them.
Second.
And, discussion?
Kinda late, see, no, no.
I, I believe the bid tab was in your packets, so you saw where the other bids were.
Okay, I was just gonna keep my finger on it.
Wasn't it put into the budget to begin with?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all good. And can we have a roll call?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Oh.
If we could waive second reading?
I make a motion to waive second reading, please.
So we can sign the contract.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
And Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading, passes seven to zero.
H? Order number zero-seven dash two thousand twenty-five, authorization for the police chief... I'm, I'm guessing it says to authorize to proceed with the purchase of one new police cruiser for five thousand from the police capital, and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two from the police regular salary.
And that needs, that needs to be amended.
For a total of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two.
That needs to be amended as undesignated funds.
We're going into undesignated funds again?
Not from his police salary account, but that's how it originally come out. He needs that salary account for the next five months. Chief should be here, too.
Yep, is he out there?
What? I'm getting... Lenny?
Good evening. To the right page.
You had both, you had both orders here.
Yes.
Yes.
So I submitted a, um, a letter, actually Randy Wing wrote it to a memo on you for February fourth, and we have two cruisers right now that are in, uh, down, one was destroyed in a car accident about two weeks ago now. Um, the other one, the transmission's completely gone, so we're down two vehicles. The one, the one's been totaled, the one that was in the car accident's been totaled. So we talked to the insurance company, they're gonna give us ninety-seven hundred dollars. Um, we spoke to Cork Auto, who does the state bid for police cars, and, um, he's given us a discounted price on a cruiser to forty-seven thousand dollars. So with the ninety-seven hundred from the insurance company, that would bring the cost to replace a brand-new cruiser down to thirty-seven. And what we didn't add in the letter here was, almost all the equipment in the cruiser was damaged, and it adds up to like twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment, and the insurance company has told us if we purchase this vehicle, um, then they'll replace the equipment free of charge, so it's a lot more of a value than thirty-seven thousand. So that's what we're asking for, just to replace the cruiser that's been totaled.
How many cruisers do we have?
We have seven. We've had seven cruisers, um, in the police department since I've, before I got here, we have the same amount of cruisers as we always did.
And how many of those patrol officers are using those cruisers every day? Is it two a day? It's always used?
Yeah, every cruiser's being used, every cruiser, but right now, we're in...
Every day?
Yeah, they're all being used, yeah.
So we have seven cruisers on the road every day?
Not all at the same time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So they're being used, but in other words, if two came off, there was two more that would go on?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay.
That's seven, subtract the two that you say aren't running right now, one's totaled, one needs a new something, transmission?
Yes, the transmission, right. Yeah, we use it every, it, it, not every week, but I would say, almost every other week, we have a cruiser, one of the cruisers is in getting repairs for something.
So the one that has to have a repair for the transmission, what's that gonna cost, us, nine thousand?
I don't have the, no, it's not gonna be that much, but I don't have the exact amount.
Again, I'm so sorry, but we're just gonna be talking about the, the one that was totaled, okay?
I'm assuming their insurance isn't gonna cover that? The replacement of the whole vehicle?
No, they just, they gave us a check for ninety, they're gonna give us ninety-seven hundred, and that's contingent upon, um, replacing it, and then they're gonna give, take care of the equipment that was in it. Which the equipment costs is, usually when I allot for a cruise every year, I usually allot fifty thousand dollars for a cruiser roughly, and then tender for the equipment, we just found out the other day, the equipment is almost doubling in price, everything's gone crazy.
Is that an older cruiser? Why'd they only give you...
It was, it was one of the older cruisers, I was, actually, I think it was the oldest cruiser we had that got destroyed, so there is a positive... I guess if you consider it positive, yeah.
No, you're right. Okay.
And where do you wanna take that money from?
Undesignated fund balance.
Yeah.
You have no capital?
Five thousand dollars, that's all he's got.
You guys only have five thousand in your capital?
Yeah.
Oh.
Is that the cruiser capital?
It is.
Okay, so they, they already bought a cruiser?
That's right, we're buying this year.
All right, so the total amount you're looking for is thirty-seven, that's... You already subtracted the five thousand you have to add to it, or?
No, I have not yet.
Okay, so the...
There's five, there's five in the capital, and then thirty-two and change from undesigned fund balance.
Oh, okay, so you, yeah.
That's why it needs to be amended, to take out that police regular salary part.
Yeah.
That was...
Yeah, just gotta amend that from police regular salary.
So I'll move that we, um, strike police regular salary and insert undesigned fund balance.
Second.
Okay, so... Any discussion? Then I will restate what you're voting on, you're voting on an amendment to change it from the police regular salary to the undesigned fund? And could we have a roll call?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Motion to amend, passes seven to zero.
I'll make a motion to, on the order as amended.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Motion passes as amended, seven to zero.
I make a motion, we forego the second reading on order number oh-seven, twenty-two-five, as amended.
Second. Okay, I...
Hold on.
Huh?
Vote on it.
Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Can we have a roll call, please?
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Doris Lebran?
Yes.
Adam Lin?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
And Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading, passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Resolution number six dash two thousand twenty-five, application for an on-premise liquor license renewal by McGillis Rosso Post, eight-eight-three-five VFW one-seventy-five, Veteran Drive, I know that you're excluded from this, Lee. So it'll be a vote of six when we get to that. Do we have a motion to go into it?
Some of them. Again.
Any discussion?
Need a public hearing?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, does anyone from the public want, wish to speak on approving the liquor license for the VFW? You gotta come over here, please.
Hello, everyone, um, my name's Brandon Curtis, I'm actually the commander of the Winslow Post. Uh, I guess I'll just remind you of the things that we do. Uh, we get to the local homeless shelters, food banks, just last week, uh, we collected donations in clothing for fire victims, we charter the, we charter the local scout troop, I mean, it kinda sells itself. Uh, we do a lot for the community, we have future goals of doing even more for the community. Is there anything you'd like to say, my friend?
I'm John Smith, I'm the quartermaster for the unit, so I, I pay all the bills. Our liquor license is what, what keeps us moving, uh, it's what keeps us running, it keeps us and allows us to do all those other things. We, we have some big plans, we wanna, you know, we wanna be here for the community, not just for veterans, so, uh, this'll help us to keep doing that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a... A motion to go in?
Motion to move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Adam Lunt?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
And Fran Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes, um, six to zero with one abstention.
Resolution number seven dash two thousand twenty-five, the municipal officers agreed to sign an agreement with the main department of transportation to allow a construction over limit permit to the contractor for the Hutmick's Asphalt Overlay on Route one thirty-seven.
Second.
Discussion? I did have a question, but I don't know who I would ask it to. I was reading on it, and so they, Paul, you do, you know, they would sign, if they damaged the road, they're going to be responsible. Have they signed that already?
I'm not sure, I haven't seen the agreement.
I looked in the packet, it didn't look like anything was signed yet.
They're probably waiting for us to sign, I would assume. There's no signature on what they sent us.
It's hard to say, yeah, we're gonna agree this one, we don't even know if they've signed it.
This is mostly formality anyway, because on a paving project, I've never seen them be overweight, anyway.
No.
'Cause they'd have to go all the way back to Sydney or everywhere else that they travel, so. And this is, this is, um, Carter Memorial for people's benefit, Carter Memorial and the bridge next year.
Oh.
So if you think it's busy now, wait till they start paving.
Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Adam Lunt?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Mike Joseph?
Yes.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Fran Hudson?
Yes.
And Doris LaBranche?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
We're now on to discussion items. Discussion on the website, I, Doris LaBranche?
Hi, I know Bill's not involved, um, I had mentioned this last month, it got shot down, stayed, uh, it was illegal. If it's illegal to, um, in a sense, um, technically not promoting businesses, what I would like to see on our website is a directory of every business here in Winslow. If this is against the law, then, uh, a lot of communities are breaking the law. I've got examples of Gray Maine, South Portland Maine, Scarborough Maine. Um, examples of where businesses are listed, and they also include a GPS, uh, GIS tracking, so, uh, a resident can go to the town's website, search for if they want to, uh, look for, see Mr. Perry here, if someone's looking for lawn care service, they can Google, um, or put in the search engine, lawn care service, whether it's Perry or Mofolo, it would promote local businesses in that search. It's a directory, we're not promoting anyone, it just lists everyone who pays taxes, there are legal businesses in Winslow, and, um, I definitely believe, let me get my little script here, 'cause I'm not well-versed in public theory, uh, public speaking, uh, my object, objective is to create a directory, um, of Winslow local businesses to increase their visibility through the town's website and foster economic growth. My sources say this is not illegal, uh, Bill's not here, um, what say you?
So what you're saying is you're not saying hire this lawn care?
Correct, I'm not promoting anyone.
What you're just saying is if you go onto the website page, the town page, and you type in, um, lawn care.
Correct.
The people in Winslow would come up with a phone number, that's it.
Yeah, every business in Winslow would, would appear. If someone's looking for a dog groomer, they can, uh, Google dog groomers, and it would, anyone offering that service here in Winslow, their name and phone number would appear. We're not technically promoting anyone, we're just listing all the services, uh, here within Winslow, all the businesses.
Well, if we're gonna have public, or the people doing it in the town office, maybe we just charge a flat rate, one-time deal to get it on the website, to pay for their hourly rate while they're working on it, if that's the case.
Well, we have two people who already, uh, work on our website, and we have an IT person. It's, I don't expect it to be done overnight, uh, they can plug away a little at a time on this.
Well, when they say it's, you're not supposed to do it, it's illegal, because you're not using tax, what are you using taxpayers' money for?
Program, uh, program the website, labor.
You don't have to, she don't want the website, she just wants the name of the business, right? You just wanna Google a business and see whose name and number come up.
We already have created.
It'd be the town page.
We have templates now, it would be the same idea, click on the icon, if someone's looking for lawn service, if someone's looking for an eating establishment, if someone is looking for auto repair, someone's looking, click on it, and then it would list all those entities under that icon.
So you're just naming the name and the phone number, right? You're not?
Name and phone number, we're not promoting, we're just listing all these entities within the town of Winslow.
Have you talked to Bill at all?
I emailed him, I did not get a response, uh, the, my sources say this is not illegal, it's being done in the town of Gray Maine. If you go to search Gray Maine, they have business directory, and then you get, um, a GPS map of all those entities within that town. Same thing for South Portland Maine, same thing for, um, Scarborough Maine, even Pittsfield Maine. Go to the Pittsfield Maine website, you get a directory, and it lists all the businesses within Pittsfield Maine. I certainly believe in, uh, promoting our businesses, and I think our, our website should sell that.
What would be the cost of that, Doris?
They can do it in their spare time. We have two people who work on the website, and we have an IT person.
No, the IT person doesn't work for us. They just take care of IT problems.
No, but we have two people right in the town office that do the web, the web.
They already designed, who, who designed our current website? Audra and Caitlin work on our website.
Excuse me, no, the, the company designed that website, we didn't do that.
Yeah, that, that gets paid out.
What company?
The company, the revised company?
Revised?
Did that website. We update that website.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot to design.
There's that.
You're just adding one more template.
I think you'd first have to find out if there's actually a cost, if there's no cost, then why wouldn't you do it? But if there's a cost, you'd have to figure out if that's something the town wants to get in.
Can we kinda drag this out into the budget process and discuss it at that time?
Well, it's her discussion, she can discuss in her meeting.
Yes, that's fine, Paul.
If we're talking costs.
Sure.
Because there are personnel changes coming.
Doris, if you're, are you finished with your discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, you don't need to apologize, I wanna make sure you've been able to say everything you wanted to.
Yes, I am.
No, I wasn't trying to cut you off, I just.
No, that's fine.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Is this something we can look into for cost-wise, to have them come in and change the website, and see if, how much it would?
You don't even have to ask about changing, you can just ask is, how difficult and is there a cost period to doing it, right?
Yeah.
I've done a little bit of website design in a past position, and I'm familiar with, um, Dreamweaver, so I know a little bit about websites, um, if you have somebody at the town office who's familiar with websites, it, it's not that complicated, you already have the system there, you have the templates in place, you're just adding another page, there's a few more extra steps. I don't know what the town uses, whether it's Dreamweaver, or Contribute, or another software application, uh, we can look into that further, but, um, I would like permission to move forward with this.
Through the chair. Before we do anything, I would suggest we get an opinion from Bill Lee, I think Bill has voiced his opinion that any use of town property, whether that's labor, wages, equipment, whatever, to promote a business, a private business.
We're not promoting, we're listing, we're providing a directory.
Simply putting, a list on how you wanted to do it is promoting a business.
So all these other towns in Maine are breaking the law?
I don't know what other towns are doing.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna stick to the discussion part and not the personal.
Okay.
I think that, I think one thing you need to do, of course, Doris, you can speak to Bill, but I also think we need to speak to whoever's in charge of our webpage, maybe they have the answers as well, so maybe those two places, and then come back.
Sure, I'm still waiting for a response from Bill, I know he's on vacation.
So who is it we addressed her question to?
I guess we'll have to find out who our web designer was, 'cause this.
Who would we ask?
Who's our web designer?
Revise is the web designer, the website.
You'd have to get the telephone number to him.
Okay, I'll email you, Audra, for their, uh, their information, so I can email them my request.
'Cause we haven't done anything with this website in a couple of years, so.
It shows.
Yeah.
Time-consuming.
Oh, I know. Are you good?
Yes, thank you.
And you'll move on to part B, interest rate for upcoming tax year, again, that's Doris?
Yes, um, I may wanna remove that from discussion if what I've been informed is accurate, that, um, the new budget is already, um, has the three percent included in that, is that correct, Tanya? Okay.
I believe so.
It is.
Okay, so I can remove that from the discussion.
It's been moved down to three percent?
I didn't see, I went line by line, I didn't see, it must be combined with another revenue?
There's, uh, according to what Katie told me earlier, there's an interest line in the budget, and that reflects what is potentially our revenue in interest at the three percent, but the state is allowing us, or any town, to go up to seven and a half percent.
I wanna make sure that doesn't happen, um, I wanna make sure it stays at three percent.
In the order, once the budget has been finalized and will be, it will reflect the three percent in there, but that dollar figure is, you know, a, an estimate of what revenue we could potentially make with three percent.
Ella, Ella created the budget at three percent.
She kept it at three, 'cause she had it at six last year, right? So she put it to three this year.
Okay, like I said, I, I looked line by line, I couldn't find it, it must be combined with another revenue.
I would imagine, I'd have to go back and locate it myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. C, uh, fix light pole at Five Danielson Street, Doris?
I had a constituent, uh, reach out to me, he said he'd been trying for several years, he's, uh, exhausted every avenue, and would like a light pole fixed, um, at Five Danielson?
It's fixed.
It's fixed already? You're fast, thank you, Paul.
When was it fixed?
About three o'clock afternoon.
Thank you, Paul.
All you had to do was put it on for discussion, and boom.
Oh, I've been trying, it's just.
Thank you, Paul.
He's busy, and the weather's been cold.
It's okay, we know how to do it now.
He owes me one, or I owe him one, I guess, but it's fixed.
Thank you.
We now open up for public comment, for anybody who'd like to speak about anything that's not on the agenda tonight.
Louis Bourgeois, Abbott Road, Winslow, uh, when they took all the stuff out of this junior high, or the old junior high, I took a ride by there, I was disgusted with all that stuff that people came and picked up, I see it online for sale in Oakland.
Yeah.
Well, I don't understand that.
Well, the thing is, it would've cost us a lot more if we would've had to have that hauled off, it would've taken probably a month's work, and nobody wanted it at the time, and they don't really want to buy it.
There was, there was tables in there for our cafeteria that looked brand-new. I mean, I would've liked to seen China get them, or, you know, another school that needed them, instead of, in Oakland.
How did Oakland end up getting them?
Somebody came over here, loaded up a trailer, and put them online for sale.
It was a feeding frenzy.
It was what?
It was like a feeding frenzy, I mean, they were just, it was free, and everybody wanted it, but it saved us.
I would've brought, uh, schools, they were in a hurry to get it done, so they could start doing asbestos. The school been closed forever.
Well, we were kinda the last.
Louis, just to make it clear, that place there, it was in shambles, as, uh, stuff on the floor, and we had to get the asbestos out, but I've even talked to a couple of schools and see if they went, they had no interest in it whatsoever. Didn't have any interest, and I just say, even the racks that they had in the kitchen, you know, some of the kitchens that could've used, I've talked to a couple of the schools, they didn't have any use for it.
I even went as far as talking to margins to see if they'd come in and get some stuff. Not used stuff.
Yeah. It just hurt me, see all that money goes. I know.
Anybody else like to speak?
Lisa Carey, China Road, I just have a question, um, is it possible to put on Benton Avenue right by the fire station where they have the crosswalk, um, like a flashing light or something like they have at other crosswalks? Just because, like, when we come out of the station, when it's a rainy night and dark, there's people who, you know, don't wear reflective clothing, that are walking across the street, and they don't stop because of the lights are going, they keep walking, and we've only, almost taken out a couple people, you know, because they, they're not pushing the light, so you don't know anybody's in the crosswalk until they're right there, and not that we're going, you know, super fast by the time we get there, but it's still since, since the detour and they can't use the other bridge, is a lot more foot traffic crossing the street there, and just having some kind of a.
My only concern is there's already a set of lights there for the fire department.
Right.
So you'd have two sets of lights real close together, that they might get confusing.
Well, they don't stop for the fire department either, so.
I've also been told they don't always go on when they should, like, I, I actually got a call from DOT last week about that, so.
Yeah. But, um, and I have a second question about, has anybody, I know I asked this question several months ago about the light on Benton Avenue, has anybody ever reached out to DOT about?
I have.
And?
They won't do it.
Really? Can we just put them blinking? 'Cause it's, it's just such a pain to sit there and watch people.
I know, but it's, I've brought it up multiple times, they've gone back to their engineers, they don't wanna do it for the safety reasons, 'cause in three months, they're gonna have to change them back, 'cause they're gonna be opening the upstream side of the bridge here in springtime. I've brought it up, they've gone all the way up to their design engineers, and they don't wanna change it, so, it's been asked.
And I can't say anything more about the transfer stuff, can I? The ambulance transfers? Or can I?
It's not on the agenda, so technically, I don't have an issue, uh, any of the council members, so.
So my only issue is the limiting between, you know, Eastern Maine, Lewiston, Portland, I mean, there's a lot more people who go a lot more places than just those hospitals, we're not talking people just going hospital to hospital, we're talking people that go from hospital to nursing homes, hospitals to private residences, there's money in transfers. You, if you limit yourself to, you know, one or two places that you're going, you